All right, I'm gonna go ahead and call this meeting of the Squim City Council to order. If we could all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if City Clerk could please take roll call.
Counselor Kelly Berger.
Here.
Counselor Dan Butler. Counselor Vicky Lowe.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Rachel Anderson.
Present.
Mayor Brandon Janice.
Present.
Counselor Harmony Rutter.
Here.
And Counselor Nicole Hartman.
Here.
And if there's a motion to excuse Counselor Butler.
So moved.
And seconded.
Any opposed? All right, he is excused. Item four, approval of the final agenda. Any changes?
I motion to approve the final agenda as presented.
And seconded.
Any opposed to the final agenda? All right, see, and then the final agenda is adopted. All right, item five, ceremonial, Chief Hill.
I'm only slightly embarrassed to say that I was starting to ad lib this and only slightly emotional, so rather than make a fool of myself, I'll try to read instead. So the reason we're here today is to recognize our K-9 Mamba's retirement. I do realize retirements aren't something that we often bring to council, but we made an exception in this case. If you know me, K-9 has been pretty near and dear to my heart for the majority of my career. And now that I'm the chief, I get to do stuff like this for our dogs. So what you gonna do about it? The citizens of Squim have been extremely supportive of our canines and have made them not only part of our department, but also part of the community. Our K-9 teams have had a good balance of police work and interacting with the public through meetings and demonstrations. An example of that support is we've never paid for a K-9. They've always been through donations or grants. As a matter of fact, Mamba was funded by a grant through the Mary P. Dulciani Halloran Foundation in James Halloran's name, and our new K-9 is being funded by that same foundation. Mom has been part of the police department for nearly eight years, and she, along with the other canines, are often deployed out front of officers to make it safer for us to do some of our most dangerous work. Squim K-9 teams have literally tracked murderers, persons armed with firearms, domestic violence suspects, persons who've committed felony assaults, robbery and burglary suspects, wanted felons, and a host of other things. I will also note that this year is the Squim Police Department's 25th year of having a K-9, so that's quite the accomplishment. So thanks to Dave Campbell who got that started. And for all of you wondering, in her retirement, K-9 Mamba will be living on Paul's couch. By couch, I mean his bed, but... And with Paul's blessing, Officer Taren Johnson will be our new K-9 training, and he's our K-9 officer, and he's already begun his training. But in order to recognize...
Is this in cutting in and out? Is this me?
Okay. To recognize Mamba's service, it's kind of a first, and sometimes the canine's contributions are overlooked. As mentioned, they're put in the line of danger to protect us, and Mamba, while serving about eight years, serving seven to 10 years of service may not sound comparable to an officer's 30-year career, but if you think about it, seven to 10 years is gonna be the majority of a canine life's dedicated to serving and protecting the community, which is why we're here honoring Mamba, surprise Paul, with a distinguished service award, which reads, "K-9 Mamba was teamed with Officer Paul Doudal-Denis in 2018. They completed more than 400 hours of state mandated training and passed the Washington State Police Canines Association's accreditation, recognizing them as a state-certified K-9 team. Mamba is trained in tracking and apprehension, and as part of her duties, she is often called upon to assist with a search for and arrest of people committing violent and dangerous crimes against citizens in Squim, as well as assisting other agencies and communities when called upon. The team has been recognized twice as master handler K-9 team through the Washington State Police K-9 Association. In addition to her patrol work, Mamba regularly participated in community events, as well as conducted demonstrations for many local organizations, furthering the Squim Police Department's mission to partner with our community. In recognition for her seven years of distinguished service to the police department and as part of the Squim community, she is deserving of the Squim Police Department Distinguished Service Medal, which I've conveniently hidden under here to surprise you." Can you hold this for her?
Mamba? Okay. It's an after the curse. Thank you. Thank you, Counsel. All right, moving on, public comment. As this is a limited public forum, individuals providing public comment must not disrupt or otherwise impede the orderly conduct of the meeting. This is not a forum for hate speech. The city of Squim supports the public's First Amendment right to free speech, but it does not support hate speech, and speakers are expected to be courteous and refrain from making hateful comments, sounds, or remarks. And any offensive words and conduct shared by the public do not reflect the city's values. The city of Squim stands firm in its commitment to being an inclusive community and rejects discrimination of any kind. City Clerk?
For individuals attending in person, please take a moment to silence your cell phones. In a moment, I will collect the public comment sign-in sheet. If you would like to make a comment, please sign up now. No one has signed up for remote public comment. For persons in chambers, you have three minutes to speak on any topic, and there will be a timer visible on the screen. A total of 30 minutes or 10 speakers will be permitted for public comment. Please state your name, if you are representing an organization, and your city of residence. And our first speaker tonight is Brad Griffith.
Okay, I don't wanna cheat at all with my time. I'm Brad Griffith. I am a Squim resident just outside the borderline. And so what I brought was a little bit of history. This photograph and the one that's going around is one that you will not find in the City Hall, Library, Museum. But this is an important piece of history. This is Squim's first Creamery building, built in 1914 by the city, City Council, mayors. And this is my house. This is my home. It was moved from Squim Avenue and approximately Brownfield, right up where the Habitat is about to build in the future, Habitat for Humanities. So this building was picked up when they pushed the freeway through and dumped, so to speak, across the middle school. And that was, well, 2000. And I purchased it and then have been revitalizing it from the inside out and also the history. So I know Beverly and Shirley Kayes from Kayes Farms lived here. They came to my building. We had cookies and coffee. I know their stories. They wrote their stories about living in the building. They were the first family. So I've done all this, this long, long research of it, and I wish not to let this bit of history disappear. And so, not that I'm running out of things to do, thanks to Colleen, but my next goal is to find out who is in the picture. So none of them are alive, but there are pioneer families, so I'll work with the pioneer group, the museum, and anybody on the council who wishes to help and bring up ideas how we can promote this history to the rest of Squim. Anybody in the public who is interested in participating. So, you know, who did the photograph? Is there other photographs that that person took? I'm sure the mayor and the council is in this photograph, and we can research who was on the council at that time and start up a list of who is in that photograph. So if you're at all interested, I can give you my contact name when we're done, and you can look at the picture.
What year was that taken?
1914, January 1st, 1914. Squim Avenue and Brownfield. Sorry. It does, it is in the City Hall. This photograph, or this print, and that's the building right there. I don't remember who did this, but she did good research as to who that was. Sorry. Oh, yeah. Okay.
Would you be willing to repeat that for the people that are virtual?
I'm sorry.
I think the camera can see all the way over here.
This print, the painting, up in this far corner, the artist did include the Creamery Building in Squim's art. She did do enough research to determine approximately where it was across from the train depot and included it in this print.
Okay, sorry.
Michelle Rhodes.
Hello again. I'm Michelle Rhodes with the Squim Irrigation Festival, and I live in Squim. And I just wanted to come again. It's just been a few weeks since I've seen you all last to thank you for your continued support of the Irrigation Festival and also to report that we had a fantastic pageant on February 22nd where we crowned our 2025 or 130th Squim Irrigation Festival royalty court. We crowned Queen Lily, Princess Roxy, Princess Joanna, and Prince Malachi. We were also able to honor the 2025 honored pioneers as selected by the Pioneer Association of Squim and our button designer, who is a fifth grader, Helen Haller. And also, we introduced our grand marshal for the 130th Grand Parade, who is Mike DeShiel, former editor of the Squim Gazette. So Queen Lily is here with me, and she's got a couple of things she'd like to say.
Hello, I'm Lily Chimsen. I'm the 2025 Squim Irrigation Festival Queen, and I would love to invite you to the kickoff dinner on March 22nd. It's a dinner and auction, and it will be at the Seven Cedars Casino. The doors open at 4:00 PM, and the float rollout has no fee, but the tickets fee is... What does the ticket be?
It's $100, but...
Okay.
They're available for sale, but the float rollout...
The tickets are currently available for sale, and the float rollout is at 4:30, and the float rollout at Seven Cedars is free.
Thank you so much. And they will actually have their first parade. It'll be the Tacoma Daffodil in April, first week of April, so we're excited. And then it'll be our parade next on May 10th. So thank you all, hope to see you there. Yes. I'm sorry. Um, no, I did not. Okay, yeah, definitely. Thank you so much.
Dale Jarvis.
Those are two great acts to follow. Thank you. Good evening, counselors and city staff. My name is Dale Jarvis. I live in Happy Valley. Last Friday, I sent a letter to all of you about the municipal funding update that I would like to have entered into the record, and I think Heather passed it out to everybody. The purpose of my letter is to clarify figures that were presented at your last council meeting. Thank the staff for working with me on this important project, provide some additional information, and make a recommendation. In the interest of brevity, I'll just talk about the latter part of the, my letter. Having worked as a CPA with hundreds of nonprofit social service agencies, there are very few that have been able to keep their overhead to 15% without requiring direct staff to take on unnecessary administrative tasks. Charity watchdogs, such as Charity Watch, use a figure of 25% or less for their category of highly efficient, which aligns with what I've taught and recommended. The federal government has a deep history of working with nonprofits and has learned that a one-size-fits-all model doesn't work. As such, the feds have a two-option process for determining indirect rates for the contracts and grants that they give. Under option one, as Vicky pointed out last meeting, a diminished rate of 15% is made available. This means that an organization can select 15% without any additional justification. Under option two, an organization does their cost accounting math, develops a cost allocation plan, and uses that plan to request an indirect rate based on their actual expenditures if their indirect costs are over 15%. Now, this evening, you're considering a motion that only includes option one, to limit indirect expenses to 15% of the total funding amount. Because this is already the second touch, it may be most prudent to add a second clause to the motion. And I wrote it in the letter, and I'll read it quickly. Quote, "And direct city staff work with the applicants to explore the feasibility and benefit of adding a second indirect rate request option at a later date," period, end quote. Thank you so much for your time.
And that concludes public comment.
All right, thank you for everyone that provided comment. I'll make consent agenda.
The items on tonight's consent agenda are claim vouchers totaling $743,441.22, the city council meeting minutes from the February 24, 2025 council retreat, and the regular session meeting minutes from February 24, 2025, lodging tax advisory committee minutes and grants, and SMC 20.01.140, public notice posting code amendment, and ordinance.
I motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
I just been moving, seconded. Anything further from council on this? Any opposed? I see, and then the consent agenda is approved. All right. General Business, 9A, Skate Park rename. This one's for me. All right. This is the final touch. This item was originally presented on January 13th, and council directed staff to schedule the appropriate hearings within 30 days, and it had the public comment period on February 24th. There was, he was... 11 written comments were submitted to the county, the city clerk. So this proposal, again, seeks to formally rename the skate park in honor of Mark Simpson, and the name would be the Marky Mark Simpson Skate Park. So I will go ahead and open it up to council discussion at this time, if there's any council discussion.
It's very straightforward, and I'm ready to make a motion. All right, not seeing any other questions or comments. So I move to adopt the proposed name change of the skate park located at Kerry Blake Park to the Marky Mark Simpson Skate Park.
I'll second that.
All right, before we move to a motion, as long as council doesn't have any objections, if Shelly or Gary is here and wants to make any comment. And go ahead and say your full name for the record.
All right, yeah, I'm Gary Bars, and I was getting teary-eyed when Mamba was retiring, so now I gotta talk about my best friend, Mark. But I just wanted to thank the council for that. It's, Mark meant a lot to this skating community. His good friend Kyle's in the audience, who's been a big part of that community. And I'm not a skater, so I'm always impressed. Anybody can do it. And Mark just, he loved living here. He loved being part of the, not only the skate park and trying to just help kids just enjoy that, but he wanted to see it improved. And so, if anything, just thanks for thinking of him and just remembering him. He meant a lot to a lot of people around here, so thank you for that.
Thank you. All right. City Clerk, take a roll call.
Counselor Berger.
Yes.
Counselor Butler. Oh. Counselor Lowe.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Mayor Janice.
Yes.
Counselor Rutter.
Yes.
Counselor Hartman.
Yes.
Motion passed, 6-0.
Thank you. All right, 9B, 2024 Year End Financial Report. Sue, you got a gaggle of them this evening.
Good evening, Mayor and council members and community. I'm so excited that I've got a full house to hear about my financial results for last year. Moment I've been waiting for, for a long time. So, Counsel, I apologize about the volume of materials that Sue has prepared for you in these, in this packet. You got your summary snapshot, my favorite, my favorite report, I think, of all that I provide you on a quarterly basis. You've got narrative summaries by fund and some summary graphs. And then I threw in an additional graph that I haven't shared that often, which is a historical look at our capital project expenditures over time, because we had absolutely historic levels last year, which is the result of our very productive engineering staff and our aggressive capital improvement program. And you also have a presentation. I'm here to answer any questions. Are there any highlights or questions that you'd like me to cover again?
Anything from council?
No questions, but just wanted to make the comment that you don't need to apologize for the volume of the content that you gave us. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, it's, it's a lot, and I appreciate the narratives. That really helps me wrap my head around these concepts, so thank you very much.
Narratives, graphs, stars, you know, whatever your bag is, you've, you've got a variety there.
There's nothing further on this item. This is an information-only, so I'll go ahead and move to 9C, 2024 Financial Policy Compliance Report.
Actually, I did have a quick question regarding the...
Previous one?
Yes, yeah, yes. So I just... Is it a policy that if the community, anybody in the public in city limits has any questions for you, can they email you?
Absolutely.
Excellent.
They can email me, they can call me, they can do anything. I'm happy to spend as much or as little time on any of the numbers that I produce for this group.
Awesome, thank you. I just wanna make sure that people know that we're not trying to gatekeep anything. All of our staff tries their very best to be very transparent and very open and communicative. So thank you, Sue.
You are welcome. Okay, I think we're on to the next, the next item. The next item is a look at our most significant financial policies. We have a debt management policy, we have an investment policy, and we have a fund balance policy. I know I talk a lot about fund balance, because that is cushion, that's reserves, that's what do we do in case of an emergency or a drop in revenues, et cetera. So you, again, I gave you all of the policies that we're talking about. Again, a lot of, a lot of materials. And I'm here to answer any questions. As you know, the reserves, reserve levels were excellent. We complied with all of our statutory obligations related to debt, and even those that are not statutory related to debt. And we have very healthy cash and investment balances. I do wanna note, one exception to the policy is that we did fall below what is determined as our fair rate of return. And I think I explained that in the materials, that it is really an unusual environment with the, with our current interest rate environment. So I'm hoping that our returns, which were, which were good, it's just that we've got such high short-term interest rates right now, things get a little wonky. So, again, here to answer any questions.
Questions from council? All right.
Okay, I will mention that because we have such healthy reserves, it's a great opportunity to take a look at where we are with our reserve levels and look for opportunities to put those reserves into savings accounts. Like I said, we have a very aggressive capital improvement program, lots of capital projects that we wanna complete. And now is the opportunity, maybe in 2025, budget amendment, to move some of those reserves where we can save for future projects, whether it be streets, whether it be water projects, sewer projects, or park projects.
And would that be something that council would need to bring up to direct staff to do?
I would, well, I'm telling you right now kinda what I'm thinking, right? And I'm thinking about the timing of budget amendments for 2025 is gonna be during the springtime. I need a little bit more time to just sort of watch things. We're only two months into the new year, so I'll have a better idea of where we're at after I give you the Q1 or the first quarter financial results.
All right.
And we'll talk more about it at that point.
Yeah, thank you, Sue.
Anything further on this? Nope. All right, this is info-only again, so we'll go ahead and move to 9D. Repeal of Squim Municipal Code 3.46, payroll funds claims.
Payroll funds and claims fund. When Erica Hammerquist asked me, "Do we have those?", I said, "No, I have no idea what they are." I think that's, can you look into that? She did determine that this particular part of the code was adopted in 1989. And she wanted to confirm with me that these particular types of funds are no longer relevant. We don't have a payroll fund, and we have a completely different process for processing claims against the city. So it is completely unnecessary, and we're asking for a complete repeal of this chapter, which is irrelevant. And so you've got a option to schedule a second touch on the matter or to move it towards consent. I'm here to answer any questions.
It's very straightforward. I'm ready to make...
It's very straightforward. I'm ready to make a motion. Not seeing any questions or comments. Okay. I move to waive the second touch on this matter and direct staff to present an ordinance repealing SMC 3.46, the payroll fund claims fund to be approved on the consent agenda of the next available meeting.
Second the motion, sorry.
Move the seconded. Anything further? Any opposed? All right, seeing none, that motion passes.
Thank you so much, council, and thank you to our legal department who is scrubbing the heck out of that code.
All right, 9E, Squim Municipal Code 2.40, Civil Service Commission Updates. Emily.
Thanks, Council. Emily Stednik, Human Resources Director. Again, continued with our code scrub efforts. This is for the Civil Service Commission Code. It's, the Civil Service Commission is a group of three volunteers that deals with some personnel matters with the police department. So specifically hiring, there are some other things that are dictated by state law on what the Civil Service Commission works with here at the city. So the, the purpose of this code scrub is to really clarify what belongs in code, what belongs in the civil service rules, what belongs on a job description, what belongs on the union contract. There are four very different things. And with the old code, it was kind of mixed together. So this new code streamlines what we feel and with our legal counsel feels is appropriate to be in the Squim Municipal Code when it comes to civil service. So that's what you have here tonight. Questions, comments? Chief Hill is here as well to answer any police-related questions that I don't know the answer to.
I'm ready to make a motion. I move to waive the second touch on this matter and direct staff to present an ordinance on the consent agenda for the next available meeting.
Second. All right, move the seconded. Anything further? Any opposed? I see, and then that motion will pass.
Thanks, council.
All right, 9F, 2025 municipal funding update. This will be a second touch, Maren.
Thank you, Council. Maren Packer, Executive Assistant in the City Manager's Office. And I'm here tonight based off of direction from last meeting regarding the 2025 municipal funding update. Council had expressed a wish for staff to come up with definitions for indirect expenses versus direct expenses. And we took those based off of Vicky's suggestion from the Code of Federal Regulations. And then you had also asked staff to come prepared with the caveat that no more than 15% may be spent on indirect expenses per applicant. And so I'm here to answer any questions.
Questions from council? Comments?
I have a question about whether we know specifically about how this will affect the YMCA situation. In terms of, so that's the question. I'll stop there. It sounds like you're ready to answer. Go ahead.
Right. So direct service providers like the YMCA Resource Navigator would fall under direct expenses and there's no cap on that funding according to council. The YMCA Navigator would just need to track her time and then she would be invoiced based on the time spent working on the project or program.
And did we already approve that funding?
For 2025?
Yes. Yes, okay. So this would be going forward. Correct. Okay. And I do want to consider the comments from Dale. Again, I run a nonprofit. We use the 15% de minimis because we don't have a building. We're like a virtual office. So if, and it is really hard for nonprofits, especially in the environment where 15%, it used to be 10% indirect is held when sometimes their costs are more. As a small business, we pay a lot more in premiums for health insurance and that drives up some of the indirect costs too. So I'd like, I like the language that Dale proposed.
I guess maybe I have some questions for Vicky since you have the most nonprofit experience on the, up here. I'm curious because so when, and also Maren, kind of a two-way question here. So when, I'll say, when an organization or agency applies for funding from us for a program. These organizations also apply for other kinds of grants and other kinds of funding and likely donations and all kinds of funding sources.
Still anthropic gifts.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. So I just wanted to clarify that there's, we're not the only ones funding.
Right.
Organizations. Okay.
The only question I would have would be with the indirect rate request option later, does that create an issue in Sue's department on trying to guess what they're going to request a later date budget-wise? Is it just better to have them?
The indirect costs are built into the budget amount. So if it's $40,000 and your indirect cost is 15%, so was that 2,000 is, is the indirect cost? If your indirect cost is 30%, then it comes off the total of the 40,000. You get less for services and more for the indirect. Does that make sense?
I'm just, I'm just trying to make sense of this request option at a later date.
Yeah. In my mind, I, when I read that, I thought, well, wouldn't it be better for them to know exactly what they're requesting right up front? That way there's no surprise, well, no surprises later or no more funding requests later.
I just don't want like Sue to have to speculate on what they're going to want later in the budget type thing. If that's, if you get what I'm saying, right?
I think I do and it doesn't change the amount.
So from what I understand, if a funding amount is over the de minimis amount, which is 15%, they would have to come to staff with a budget breakdown of what additional expenses would be over that 15% cap. And then staff would have to look and make sure that that's compliant with code and compliant with standards before that funding was approved to move forward.
Can you give me a scenario?
Yes.
Well, let's use some, so I don't have to break out my calculator. So let's say I am borrowing, I'm a grant for $100,000. And my indirect cost is using the de minimis, which is 15%. So that would be $15,000. So $85,000 would go to direct services. And then the 15,000 would go to indirect costs. If my indirect cost were 25%, 30%, it would still be a $100,000 grant less the 25,000 for indirect and then only 75,000 for the services. So the total stays the same. It's just how the funds are shifted around and used.
If I can interrupt one second, council, City Manager Matt Huish has his hand raised. So he would like to, Matt, go ahead and you can address council.
Can you all hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay, well, number one, thank Maren and thank you, Vicky, for clarifying all of this. A lot of work has been done and I, I think we're getting very close. So I really appreciate the clarification and the definitions and all that. And, and to Harmony's question, which I think a lot of people, especially in the community have, you, you know, your question about, well, salaries, wages and benefits. How would that work for like a navigator? You'll see per Maren's definitions and through federal definitions that you can pay a salary on either side. It's just one is going directly to the, the mission, to, to the direct mission of it. So nurses, phlebotomists, navigators, anybody that's providing direct care. Unlike an indirect salary that is really more administration and other, you know, utilities and those kinds of things. So hopefully that clarifies it for you, Harmony. The, the other thing I would say is Maren has been really good at trying to clean up the language on our website about these municipal grants. And we realize that we probably need to not only make them clear upfront, but we plan on meeting with everybody that submits a grant this year and, and, and walking through them on the front end prior to even bringing those grant requests to you so that we'll have total clarification really early with them on their budget, on their, on their proposal, on their reporting and their deliverables. We just, we just felt like we were just a little out of touch and weren't communicating as clearly as we could and probably should. So I think for all those reasons, next year will be very different. But that's, I'm kind of talking around the issue that, about this 15% direct and indirect. But there's, all those other things that I just mentioned also come into play. And I think will, will keep us super compliant and things fairly clarified with any applicant. So just wanted to touch on base on those things. Thank you.
I think what we're trying to get away from is just gifting of public funds. Right now, our two applications are for broad public benefit or human services organizations. And so with councils, we don't really have any other caveats for, for budgeting or expenditures. And so this is why we're pursuing direction from council.
And for clarity too, you reached out to MRSC to try and get some barriers.
Yes, we did do a lot of research with RCW's MRSC codes. Unfortunately, when it comes to municipal funding, apart from the gifting of public funds, which is very clear, there's not a lot else that's really concrete. The biggest direction that I got from MRSC was that municipal funding can support a program or project, but it cannot provide support to the community organization. And so that's the difference between direct versus indirect cost. But he did say that each, several cities who run municipal funding programs do operate differently from each other because of the vagueness of the laws.
It's a totally normal practice too, for an applicant to negotiate their indirect rate with the grantor.
I think my biggest thing is just reading this, like trying to, maybe I'm just reading too much into like I said, the request option and a later date thing. Maybe I'm just reading too much, like I said.
I think we could just put option two into the policy too, that, and the organization can, can show what their rate is based on actual cost and then negotiate a rate with the city.
If it's math, I'll leave that to Sue. It's just, I just thought, like I said, I don't want to make it, you know, have Sue have issues with her budget when it comes to that type of stuff. You know, with a proposal in the middle of the year that she's not prepared type for, kind of thing.
It still stays within whatever. So if the grant is 40,000, even if the indirect rate is higher, the grant is still 40,000. Does that make sense?
And I think my hangup is that I would, just personally, I would prefer that funding go to the direct expenses.
It is impossible to operate a nonprofit without indirect expenses.
Right. But I'm just saying, I would much rather 80% of whatever we fund go to direct expenses rather than 50%.
Is there a way for us to, I wonder if there would be, if it would make sense to put in some sort of range in there about indirect costs so that they were, as per the recommendation from Dale, who has a lot of experience in this topic. And I have worked also with nonprofits. I don't do the financial side or the budgeting side of the work that I do with nonprofit organizations. But I tell you what, without all that paperwork and all, it just, there's, there's just time spent making sure that the nonprofit can function and do its job. Is there a way for us perhaps to then put in some sort of range about the indirect costs that if they go over 25%, that then there's this review process implemented of some sort? Do you, I'm here, I see in your, your nodding, Vicky, what are you thinking?
Well, I just want to make one more point. Is the lower the wages, the higher the indirect cost? Because if you have somebody that makes $20 an hour and you're paying for their whole family's insurance at $1,500 a month, their indirect cost is really out of balance. And so, I mean, really what we're doing is saying, if you can't afford to pay people very much, we don't want you to have any more money on top of that. So it's already, it's like an adverse selection of people who don't already have much money. Does that make sense? Sorry about my voice. But it, I mean, if, if we would say they could negotiate up to 20% or 25% by showing that those costs are, are actual costs for them. Does that make sense, Maren?
Yes, I think for this, we would just need really clear direction from staff, or sorry, from council so that staff are in a position of either approving or denying applicants before they reach council. So I think staff are happy to meet with the applicants. As Mr. Huish already said, I, I plan on doing all of that before the June 15th deadline. And if council would like to adopt a range, we can certainly meet with applicants to make sure that the finances are within that range. But we would not be approving or denying any applicants. That would all go before council.
I have a question. So when the organization applies for the grant, can they request, like if they wanted 10% indirect expenses instead of 15?
So they do submit a budget. Currently, our budgets are not broken out into direct versus indirect costs. Staff has to just surmise. So we can definitely adjust the process so that they are submitting direct versus indirect expenses budgets.
I have another question. I, I feel like I should already know the answer to this question. So I'm, I'm asking for a friend, that being myself. Are the municipal funds that the applicants are applying for similar to grant requests in that there's reporting? Once they're approved, then there's deliverables and reporting. So that wouldn't, so then technically the time spent creating those deliverables and doing, or well, the deliverables ideally are their, is the programming, but the reporting and the documentation, that would all be administrative.
Yeah, to give you a, a current example, we currently provide municipal funding for SHHC, Squim Health and Health and Collaborative. And we give them a certain percentage and they run the programs. And then we also fund an additional 10% for United Way of Clough County to administrate the funding to each of these separate programs. So the 10% that United Way of Clough County gets is strictly indirect expenses for them to coordinate reports and submit reports and invoices back to the city.
So do we want to suggest two options for indirect rate? I guess is the question.
I, I guess, well, I was, I was thinking, I am more inclined to bump it up to 20%. But, hold on, oh, standby.
Can I ask a question while? Can I ask a question while? Yeah, I guess, this is for Vicky and Marin. I guess, wouldn't it be simpler to, for us just decide, like, a max indirect costs we'd be willing to fund? And then they would just supply the budget breakdown of their indirect costs?
That's, yeah.
Is that, is it not that simple? Or, to me, that seems like the simplest way to do it for everybody.
I think that simplifies things for staff.
Right, yeah, that's what I was thinking.
Well, in that case, I think, just the research I did and what Dale said, I think 25% would be a good limit.
Do you want to try making a motion, your first motion? We're rooting for you. I'm so excited.
I move to direct staff to update the municipal funding policy to state that indirect expenses may not exceed 25% of the total municipal funding amount. And personnel costs must be tracked according to the updated guidelines.
I second that motion.
Been, much has been made. Moving second it, is there anything further from council?
I was just noticing a charity navigator actually goes up to 30%. So I think this is well within reasonable.
Anything further from council? Hey, may I oppose that motion? I see, and none of that motion will pass.
Congratulations to Kelly on his first motion.
Thank you, council.
All right, item 10, youth lays on reports.
Hello? For the purpose of the record, this is Malia Nelson. So recently, we've had a lot going on, especially at the high school. So looking ahead for this week, our knowledgeable, which is our trivia club, heads off to state on March 21st. Our Hosa Club, which is our future health professionals club, has over 40 members. We're taking all 40 of those members to Spokane this week for three days for the state conference. Spring sports just started this past week, not this week, but the week before. And on March 11th, which is tomorrow, we have a college prep night for our seniors. Because, um, what? Nine through 11? Oh, sorry, the college prep night is for grades nine through 11, not for seniors. But seniors are graduating soon.
Yeah, so we also have registration for classes happening in about two weeks. So that'll, almost time, man of the year. You can tell by all the sunlight. Flocking is happening, which is our annual senior classes, like grad party fundraiser. So if you get flocked, think about donating to the, yeah, you know what to do. Oh, sorry, for the purposes of the record, this is Leila Sundin, student rep, sorry. Also, our spring formal is coming up. It's on March 21st as well. And then we just had the Squim Sunshine Festival. So the color run just happened and we had some leadership students and interact students help out with that. And then Walk for Water as well was just two weeks ago. We were very successful. It was one of, it's been one of our most successful years. So, yeah. Oh, yeah, and so I'll just say, for Walk for Water, we got $5,700 for our well and that exceeded our goal by $700. So, yeah.
Also, Malia, did you have an announcement to make? Because I can make it for you.
Yeah, so this past week, or two weeks ago, I guess now, I received a surprise in my class. Representative from U Dub came in and told me that I had not only been accepted into the University of Washington, but also has received a presidential scholarship. So I'm very excited for that. I was at the school meeting and they asked me to speak a little bit more about that. So if you were there, you've already heard. But yeah, that's where I'll be attending and I'm really excited. Thank you. It was really exciting. They invited me to the shindig. And I can't remember why. Maybe I wrote like a, yes, I recommend this person. So sorry if I can't remember doing that. But it was just so exciting to be able to tell her parents. I've never been so proud of somebody else's kid. So great job, Malia. Thank you, Rachel.
All right, city manager.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your tolerance of me being out of town and attending remotely. I was able to get to you, city manager report, of course, which is in your inbox. And so I won't, you know, go into a lot of the detail there, but I did want to highlight a couple of things, primarily in section one. I think a lot of you participated in that. Certainly Rachel and others were very involved in this sixth annual sunshine festival. So 1A was an all hands on deck effort, huge efforts by so many people, particularly Public Works and of course Hannah and EJ in the Parks and Events Department. But we broke a lot of records in the fun run and a lot of things. And of course, had great weather. So anyway, just wanted to shout out to my staff for that and all of their work and also to council for your support. I also want to talk about one C just very briefly. We expanded our Squim Operational Area Emergency Management Meeting to, beyond just the city leadership and the fire district. We included PUD and the Squim School District as well as OMC and had an hour and a half meeting in your council room a couple just last week. Nicole was there, council member Nicole representing PUD and is mobilizing some of her company's efforts to get behind what we're trying to do with emergency management. But that was a really successful meeting, trying to expand our reach with, across the community relative to emergency preparation and whatnot. So I appreciate that. And finally, in 1D, I am very excited about that. We have included council in launching of Gov AI. It's a very secure, we found a really good vendor and have vetted them in depth, calling a lot of the other cities that have used them and are quite close to the founders. And so we feel very good about that and we will be kicking that off. We included council in this. So if you ever choose to use AI and you want to be in a very secure environment, you can come to city hall, you can sign in under your city email and password and know that you're secure. So, and we have training going on. There's four different trainings as well as recordings of those trainings, should you not be able to make the training sessions tomorrow and Wednesday. So, but that's been a big initiative. I'll quickly move through just a couple of other things, knowing that you have this report in front of you. We were pleased to have Jason, who is our survey vendor from the Midwest, report to us and senior management team last week. Got really good results, much like the resident survey. They really appreciated our police department, the cleanliness of our city, et cetera, et cetera. There's some things they'd like to see with enforcement. And we'll work with the mayor and deputy mayor in the next agenda planning meeting and maybe get a brief summary of, there's some great graphs and data to share with the city council, should you be interested. We'll get that on an agenda in one of your upcoming meetings. Kind of fun to see that and how all the businesses rated the city. Beyond that, I'd just call your attention to number six, which there's a lot of things happening in the information technology area in the city, from Starlinks to, you know, working with PUD and upgrading a lot of our hardware and software. Great things with Peninsular College, et cetera. As well as with number seven, the PD is, Police Department is doing a lot and has, just has a lot of activity. It's just probably too much to call out here now. Finally, I'll just point to 8A, which is amazing. I was privileged, while I was invited, I heard about it through Public Works and Paul and Nick, who are the city's representative on a really very big collaborative coordination kind of committee, if you will. The state, both Department of Ecology, Department of Commerce, I think the water, state water, folks have all come together on the state level. They're working with the county folks and then, because Flora Acres is out of the city, but they have asked about participation in the city, eventually annexation and what can, what our recommendations are because we have the subject matter experts relative to water and sewer. So I was able to attend one of their HOA meetings last week. County and state representatives were there, but Paul did most of the talking, explaining this process. It's really amazing. I've asked Paul to probably summarize that for council so that you'll know just exactly what's happening next to our city. And I think they have a unanimous interest in joining our city through annexation. So, but just amazing financial cooperation, trying to help out a really distressed community, contiguous to Squim. And finally, I'll just point out 8C, which is of course the Department of Ecology and who recently awarded our WRF the 2024 Outstanding Performance Award. And there's all kinds of recognition relative to that. And they're coming up and taking pictures and some other things. WRF continues to get great and outstanding awards with, for their, all that they are doing down there. So really just, I don't want to take too much time, but willing to answer any questions relative to my report, should you have any. Thank you.
Questions or anything from council?
Hey, Matt, this is Vicky. On the traffic speed studies and follow-up enforcement strategy, strategic planning, are we looking at Squim third and fifth avenues for those studies?
So I think there's multiple stud, excuse me. I think there's multiple studies being done. Paul and Chief Hill are primarily coordinating all of that. The most recent one that I was previewed to had more to do with North Squim Road, Squim Dungeon Escher Road, some really, we had quite a few complaints out there. Put a machine out there that gave us a lot of data. And so now the PD is following up on trying to do some enforcement out that way. But I know that PD has several of these machines, speed machines around. And I can defer to either Paul or Mike about third and fifth. I wasn't.
I can follow up with Chief Hill.
Yeah, there, they, yeah, maybe that's a better email. But, and we've got lots of data around that, too, so.
Anyone else? All right, thanks, Matt.
Thank you.
All right, council reports. Anybody have anything? All right, seeing none. All right, Matt, you're up again with a open council discussion habitat.
Well, thank you so much, council, for your interest in, from staff and from Habitat to, you know, a better understand our chip grant with the Department of Commerce. This is, a lot of times we get asked by residents and other folks in the community, kind of where that's at. This, I think it became particular, particularly interesting and important with your retreat last week where we, you were able to see the county's allocation or assessment of some affordable housing and some numbers and data that are expected for us to kind of make plans for and make ways for and whatnot. And our interest in having Habitat help us with some of that assessment. So I was, I think the mayor and deputy mayor asked for an update from Habitat relative to that chip grant. And I just thought I would start off with just some brief context on the timelines for that and then turn time over to Colleen to, you know, give her update. Because some of the council has changed since we started this and because it's been kind of extended over several years, I thought I'd just run through a quick timeline. So whether you write this down or I guess I could project it. But we first applied for this November of 2022. It was actually October 31st, but that was when the application went in. And about seven months later, on July 1st of 2023, we were awarded that grant. And as you know, that's a, it's a grant that the city applies for, but you need a developer, a partner to make the application. And so Habitat filled out their part of the grant to make it successful. The contract was signed by council and myself in November of 2024. So we received it in November, excuse me, July 1st of 23. Sort of kind of had it in our possession, wanting to make sure that Habitat lined up their, you know, whatever, all of their contractors and their other finances and whatnot. And so we finally signed it or activated the commerce grant in the end of November of 24, so not very long ago. Also in November of 24, Habitat brought in their project review to the DCD department, to our planning department, and they received a review letter from us on that. So the, once we signed, council signed and I signed the contract with Commerce or activated that grant in November of 24, the Commerce signed their part of the grant and ratified that grant on January 14th of this year, 2025. So it's, you know, it's kind of been a multiple year process of applying, of waiting to hear back, of us sitting on it, wanting to make sure that when we activate it, we could meet our timelines and everything would be in order. So that's kind of where it's at at this point. I know there are ongoing timelines that need to be met to make sure that the grant doesn't, you know, isn't nullified or doesn't default or whatever. So, but I, but Megan is there to, Megan and Marin both worked really closely with Colleen and her staff to, you know, to get this grant and can answer any questions regarding future deadlines or whatnot. So with that, I just want to turn the time over to Colleen. She was kind enough to, we didn't give her a lot of notice to come in, but she was very comfortable and accepted our invitation to present to you tonight. So I'll be quiet and turn the time over to Colleen. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Thank you, council. Thank you, community. I appreciate the opportunity to come check in with you. It's been a while. And there are some new faces up here. I do have a statement that I wrote. It's a little bit of a repeat of what Matt shared, but I timed myself. I'm a little over three minutes, but I understood I get a little more time when I'm in the agenda. So Squim Avenue, formerly known as the Brownfield Road property, roughly 6.4 acres, was purchased by Habitat in August of 2022. So roll the clock back, October of 2021, Habitat initiated in earnest an advocacy campaign to the city of Squim that would allow multifamily housing to be built within Squim city limits. There were many partners in the campaign over the 12 months of attending planning commission meetings, city council meetings. And in October of 2022, the Squim City Council voted unanimously to allow for multifamily housing. This was significant because now, instead of 20 or 22 homes, single family detached, we could build potentially 50 affordable homes, all the better for our community. Habitat began in earnest to plan and hire experts like engineers, architects, to be in the infrastructure and development. We ultimately chose LDC, which I think the city has had some contracts with. which I think the city has had some contracts with. In late summer of 2022, Habitat was made aware of a funding through the Washington State Commerce chip grant, which stands for Connecting Housing to Infrastructure Program. Habitat met with the city and a staff representative from Washington State Commerce to investigate if Squim Avenue project was a viable candidate for this funding. We left the meeting feeling confident that our project was a great fit. Next step was to gain city council approval to apply for the grant as it requires a local jurisdiction to apply in partnership with a developer, in this case Habitat Clallum. City council approved. Thank you. We got to work on the grant application, which was extensive. Megan and Maren from the city were terrific to work with. While they did their parts, Habitat began to gather the required information for the application of our specific project. On October 31st, 2022, we hit the submit button. We took pictures and celebrated. As Matt said, we found out in 2023, the city was notified, the grant was fully funded for $2 million, which was significant. This funding is for sewer and electrical and GAFs and the permitting, not impact fees, but also for permitting. So in the meantime, there were many reports to be cleaned, completed when developing a cattle grazing field into affordable home community, one of which is a wetland study. This was a proverbial bump in the road. I had an outline timeline attached and I will not go into details, but I am going to leave it with Heather. She can share with you. But the impact was losing four units, four houses. This potentially mean 15 or more residents not receiving safe, decent place to live. Habitat felt, not yet knowing who these families would be, that they were worth fighting for. However, ultimately Habitat lost, the wetland stands, and we lost a minimum of four units. The city had a change in leadership in community development and Habitat made an appointment early on to meet with Lindsay Zemel to get the project back on track. Habitat was given differing information on different occasions on what was required. Ultimately, Lindsay informed Habitat that our A cup expired in September of 2024. She would not accept a resubmital as she originally stated she would. And if we wanted to move forward with the project, we would need to submit an entirely new application and pay the nearly $8,000 permit fee for a second time before the city would consider reviewing the application. Habitat paid the permit fee a second time, was, the permit was resubmitted in November. On November 27th, Habitat received 11 pages of comments back on the new A cup application. Our engineer at LDC went back to work on responding to those 11 pages. There were, of course, the holidays and back and forth with city staff via email with questions and clarifications. On the items listed on the 11 pages, the full response was submitted back to the city on March 6. Here we are on March 10th. This was a two-year grant. We are quickly coming up on the end of that two years. There is a possibility to repurpose that money for another two year. We don't know in the climate that we're in if that is actually truly feasible. Washington State Commerce, I talked to them probably early February. They're feeling like this is a really popular program and the money will still be there, but we will need to reapply for the extension of the two years because clearly we're not going to spend it all in the next eight or so months. So that's where we are. That's what's happening. This project means a lot to us. It means a lot to the city. And we're hoping that you will continue to support us with renewing the funding if Washington Commerce allows. I will also point out that it is very likely, we got a community impact fund from Representative Kilmer, and it's very likely that funding is gone. We won't receive that funding. So that makes this chip funding even more critical that we receive that. So did the council have any questions?
So who has to reapply for an extension?
That would be the city.
Okay.
We are the sub recipient, and so we'll pay for things, we'll submit it to the city. The city returns it into Commerce, Commerce reimburses, and then we get reimbursed. It's going to be lots of fun. Megan and I are going to spend a lot of time communicating.
I'm assuming we are prepared to do so if need be?
Counsel, if I may, while Megan is making her way to the podium here. Purposes of the record, Christina Nelson Gross. I just want to make sure that we're all on the same proverbial page in terms of where we are in the permitting process. Ms. Robinson made reference to 11 pages of comments. I will say I have that letter here and many of them, I think by my calculation, somewhere in the neighborhood of 40 were ones that Habitat is in full control over and could be done very, very quickly. Things like a quality control review before submittal would be addressed. So I think it is critical that the council and the members of the public know that the city has been and continues to be a very willing partner in all of this. And we have reached out to Habitat and will continue to do so and are very interested in seeing Habitat succeed in this project and doing the partnership as we go forward on this. So with that, I don't know that I have any more information to share with council, but also here to answer questions.
Hey, this is Megan Uker with Public Works. And so I have on our face sheet of our, of our signed contract, our end date, as Colleen said, is June 20th, 2025, so right around the end of the biennium. But then it says, subject to reappraisal through June 30th, 2027. So Colleen, when I talked with Commerce, it's really dependent on our legislative budget, is my understanding. They have not sent anything about reapplying. So, but I will look into that just to be prepared as this deadline approaches. And, you know, we're free to, depending on our timeline, again, with DCD and your timeline, you know, anything can be expended as we come up to that deadline, you know, prior to, again, June 20th, 2025. So again, application, you know, what the extent of that, I'm not sure. We haven't received anything from Commerce yet.
Maybe I can just ask Colleen, excuse me, council, this is Matt again remotely. I, I think there's two separate processes here and that would, that would help us be successful in this initiative. One is if, if we can get some building over there, Commerce will be less likely to ever pull the funding because it's a project in process. That's very different than us signing the contract or the deadlines. But we, we, I think it would be to everybody's advantage the sooner we can, we can show, because I think the way the grant is worded, and I'm, again, Megan and Colleen are the experts here, but it's, it needs to show some progress. There, there has to be an effort of moving towards the deliverable. So I would just say, and I, again, maybe Megan or Colleen can address this, or maybe Christina, the sooner we can see progress there, probably the more likely we will be to remain, maintain our funding. Is that correct?
So when I talk to Commerce, this is Colleen again, when I talk to Commerce, having a permit is moving in the direction, having the ratified permit is something that they would consider that we are showing good faith that we're moving forward. And we have submitted everything back to the city, so it's back with the city now.
This isn't something that needs to go to a hearing examiner, right?
It will, yes.
Yes, that could take forever.
Yes, it would, excuse me. But the, as I mentioned, many of the comments from the November 27th letter were wholly within Habitat's control in correcting. And so the, how, assuming that all of those are corrected, I would think that we would be able to move that fairly quickly. I want to be careful about speaking too much of that, about timelines. But with the, we have 14 days to review whether or not the resubmittals are complete. That day started on the 6th. So if everything is complete, assuming that there wasn't any other information that was required, we could theoretically get to hearing examiner, say, in probably, we usually do, I think, the fourth Thursday of the month. So perhaps fourth Thursday in April, perhaps even fourth Thursday in May. But if it's getting the permit, getting the hearing examiner, our hearing examiner has been very open to working with us on dates when need be.
I, I'm reminded of a conversation I've had with Tim Dalton that talked about Commerce and whatever. And, and they, he said, if you can get a shovel in the ground, that almost always protects or assures the funding that was approved will be maintained now. No, no promises, but, and I don't know what the timelines are. Maybe this isn't the right place to try to put the task and timelines together with planning and with the development. But does anybody want to comment on when, when we, that, you know, we'd see movement in, with the actual, what, what Tim calls shovel in the ground? Or, because I feel like Megan will be more successful if that, but maybe it's just submitting a plan. I don't know.
So I didn't talk to Timothy Dalton. I talked to Washington Commerce. And the woman there said, having a permit is showing that you're moving towards that. She did not use the frame shovel in the ground, but Tim could possibly have talked to someone different or know something different than me. Harmony, did you have a question?
Thank you, Colleen. And I really appreciate this discussion. So I'm wondering, going back to what you said, Christina, is, when you were talking about the fourth Thursdays being the days that applications are submitted to the hearing examiner, you mentioned April and May, but we haven't passed the fourth Thursday of March, which would be the 27th. Is there, could you help me understand how we, if it hasn't happened yet, but there's a process that has, that will take longer than that?
So, excuse me, this is where I am not involved in the direct review. And so if today, today is the 10th, sorry, I'm going to do math on the spot. So if we've got 14 days from the 6th, that puts us to the 20, what, 24, 20th? Okay, to the 20th. So without knowing what the fourth Thursday is, we have noticing requirements that we have to follow. We have to have the packet to the hearing examiner, no less than, I believe it's 10 business days before the date of the hearing to allow him to review all of the materials, noticing for public comments, all of those types of things. So as a practical matter, beginning of March is, yeah, this, the fourth Thursday in March is not going to be realistic, frankly.
So just a comment that when I was in, or when we were in agenda planning, and I thought this was a good idea to get updates, I was hoping it would be a update of, okay, best case scenario, we put in our paperwork, hearing examiner by this date, and then feedback this date, and then shovel in the ground this date as a best case scenario. So how long typically from hearing examiner date can developers get the shovel in the ground?
So my understanding is once it goes before the hearing examiner, there's also another process with the city that it goes back to. And I could be wrong on that. You probably know the, this is my first development, so forgive me for not knowing all the.
No, that's fine. And I'm looking around and it looks like we have parks and mega and grants. So, so it does fall to me. So yes, typically there is a site construction process because that's where the, the subdivision, preliminary subdivision process is the overall approval. That's what gives you the concept, right, that lays out the general outlines of your streets, the general outlines of where your buildings are going to be located. In this case, the wetland buffers and how they're going to be meeting all of those things. The site construction plan is where you get down into the nitty gritty of the details of where those streets are going to be and what it's going to be in them, where those water and sewer lines are going to be, how big those lines are going to be. And because there's always things that change once you start getting into that process and looking the practical realities of it, there is always a little bit of negotiation and back and forth and changes along the way in that site construction process. It always holds, it always is consistent with the preliminary approval, but there is changes that allows people, they will talk engineer to engineer, things that I don't, I don't know and understand, but they would come to agreement on that. And then there would be the word go. And then, of course, after that, building permit processes, once the infrastructure is in the ground.
So, short answer is, it varies.
It varies considerably, yes. So we've had success with applicants who come in. And if, you know, people who do this for a living, right, they have more success and understanding of what is involved. Habitat is, of course, as Colleen has said repeatedly, she is not a developer and the city does not expect her to be a developer. And we've reached out several times asking if Habitat would like some assistance. City staff need to be very careful because we cannot design the project for them, but we can offer things or explain when, when the code or the, the comment says this, this is what you need to do, or something like that. And we've reached out multiple times and will continue to do so.
And what we're looking for right now is the conditional use permit. For us to say, you have these zoning, these codes, we want to do this thing. And the hearing examiner says, yes, this meets within what city of Squim allows. So the conditional use permit is the condition to use the property for the purpose we're applying for. So that's step one.
Did you say the hearing examiner would sometimes work outside of his regular schedule?
Occasionally, but we still have our additional noticing requirements in those times. So if, for example, you know, let's say that Habitat's submittal was complete and everything was spot on, we, that would put us until approximately the 20th. I believe, or, excuse me, I believe our notice period is somewhere in the neighborhood of 14 days. And then we would have probably another, which would put us into beginning of April. And then we would have another, I think it's, like I said, I think it's 10 business days to get our staff report and all of our exhibits to the hearing examiner. So that puts us into roughly mid-April. So we're only talking about an additional week if we wait until the regularly scheduled day.
I'm beginning to understand why we have trouble with affordable housing. Is there any advocacy needed at the state level with our legislators?
Advocacy is always helpful for affordable housing. So yes, appreciated. I mean, we're very fortunate to have Representative Theringer, who is the budget chair committee in our district. But yes, we were just there Wednesday a week ago down in Olympia and met with our elected officials.
Are there any other elected officials besides the ones from the 24th district that need advocacy?
Well, we're habitats all over the state, but for this purpose, just the 24th district right now.
Anyone else?
So I, sorry, Matt, does that mean that you'll talk to DeVore also and make sure that he understands and to keep his ears open about the budget?
Yes, for sure. And again, I'm sorry I'm remote. I would love to be more in, you know, in person and part of this conversation. You know, this is really going back to the comp plan and what you, you all as a council are paying so much attention to, which I think is wonderful. And the, and the, and the education and the process that you went through with, with Carla last week. Anyway, because this is our code, like I don't know if it's an affordable housing issue as much as this is a building issue. This is what most, anybody that wants to put up a house in any community has a process. So it feels like, you know, it's hurried or rushed, but it, it doesn't, you know, it is what it is. It's, it's out there for those that, that use, do this all day long and for a day job. Anyway. for those that use, do this all day long and for a day job. Anyway, I don't think there's any bias for any type of house. It's, it's just the building code and the process. So.
Thank you, Matt. Purposes of the record, Christina, I absolutely agree with that. This is the process that every developer goes through. And a lot of this is mandated by the state. Some of these other things like site construction, and these are just practical realities that local jurisdictions need to know and understand in order to have safe, well-built, thoughtful connections. So, you know, otherwise that, you know, the ways the city used to do it before we adopted the site construction process is that all of those details were forced to be worked out during the preliminary plat approval process, which was even more time consuming, more expensive, and became a barrier in and of itself to people to try to come in and get through the preliminary plat approval process. So from the city's perspective, while, you know, balancing the regulatory requirements and the practical requirements of having appropriate streets and utility connections and all of those types of things, you know, the staff looked at this and thought that this was a better use of people's time because then the applicant could be assured that I've got my preliminary plat approval process. That can't be taken away from me. The rules are not going to change while I go through the site construction process. If you go back to the old way of doing it, application or a subdivision in this case was not vested under the laws, meaning that the laws stay the same until you got a complete application. And so if you, if we couldn't ever get to a decision to, to agree on what those street utility connections and all of those things, you might not ever get a complete application. So while, while I think that it may be a foreign concept to people who aren't in develop, it is a standard practice throughout the state.
And Vicki.
My comment was just that I think we still have some work to do because this is the second affordable housing project that has gotten behind because of all of the complications that get in the way. And then I just want to see as we move forward with the comp plan that we really focus on how we can make, sorry, I already talked too much today, how we can make sure that the process works for everybody, not just for big developers who are coming here from another state and making a bunch of money and leaving. And these are people who live here, who are invested in our community. I want to make sure that they have an equal opportunity to build housing.
Completely understand that sentiment, counselor. And, you know, while staff do not offer the same level of support that we have offered to Habitat because they're private developers, we have reached out to Habitat and are happy to do so.
And, and let me add to that, if, I'm sorry to interrupt, but when we were in the early stages of filling or considering this grant, we, we, Colleen came over to City Hall, we called the director of the CHIP grant program to introduce the Habitat project to them and to kind of walk through preliminarily what, what that grant would, application would look like. And we got some really good input from him. So to get back to your question, Vicki, for sure, I'm willing to call them again. Habitat is a well-known entity. It's a well-known deliverable, you know, great, great model for equity, you know, sweat equity and vested equity over time. So I think, I think commerce would be more inclined than not, it's, you know, to, to support a Habitat project. They're, they're, they're very well known and, and appreciated by the state. So for sure, we can make some calls and do what we can do like we did before. I don't know if it's legislators, although I'm very comfortable calling them as well. So yes, you'll have unlimited support from staff to try to help this go forward and, and as it always has been. So.
This is Megan Uker with Public Works and, and Counselor Lowe to follow up on your request to talk with DeVore. I can certainly do that. I actually did that a few weeks ago with a, a grant I forgot that we had from WashDOT, an application in. And again, I, you know, I'm not an expert on the legislative budget, but CHIP, the CHIP program is a line item in there. And all of these things, I'm sure are somewhat on the table. How that exactly works, I don't know. But I think it's worth letting our, you know, DeVore, our lobbyists know that we have skin in that game essentially there. And, you know, that that's something that we want to advocate for that program to, you know, continue to be funded.
Money well spent. Thank you, counselors. Thank you for your time tonight. Thanks for the invitation, Matt. Thank you, community.
Thank you. All right, 11B council committee assignments.
So at the last council meeting, there was some direction from council to staff to follow up on three different items. And the first one was the hearing examiner's decision to determine membership requirements and the length of time to, for the committee that they're going to meet. And Erica got me a copy of the contract and I outlined that in the email that was sent to you guys today, that June 2025 is when the committee like officially stops, but they can continue to meet if they want. Counselor Butler is on that committee. And if he chooses, he can continue to attend the meetings as they decide to get scheduled. And only one counselor is required to attend. So I know there was a conversation about Kathy Downers, but it's just, we only need one counselor for that. And then the second item was for the Clallam Transit System Board. And that is also outlined in the mail, in my email to you today, kind of in a, council needs to, I guess, make a decision about how they'd like to move forward with the two required council vacancies, well, one vacancy that we currently have. Rachel has one, Deputy Mayor Anderson, and then Mayor Janice has the alternate. So Barb at Clallam Transit, her recommendation was that to satisfy the two required positions, that Mayor Janice move into primary and just attend as he can, or council can choose to leave that position vacant until it's filled. However, there was also some, she gave a warning, I guess, you know, something for council's consideration about whether or not, how that would affect quorum related issues being voted on at the meetings.
Right. And our problem is, nobody has the capacity, nobody else has the capacity to be there at that time. And so even Brandon, even though he's an alternate, he wouldn't be able to be an alternate anyway, because he has to work. So I think our only option really is to leave it open. That's, that's all we can do, which is unfortunate, because that means we just leave a squim spot open when we vote for things, which could be detrimental. It hasn't, I'm trying to think of, you know, what we've voted on in the past, and there hasn't been any squim oriented agenda items for those meetings where, you know, it wouldn't have been voted on otherwise, if that, if that makes sense. So, I mean, it's unfortunate, but that's, that's the reality. If nobody has the capacity to be there, then that's, that's the reality.
And then, I'm sorry, did Counselor Butler say he was unavailable? Or maybe, maybe we could revisit this at our next meeting, once all seven counselors are available to discuss this again?
Well, we talked about it at last one, and I had asked if anybody was available, and nobody was available, and that included Dan. So, I mean, it just comes back around to like, yes, it's a bummer. But if that's the way we have to move forward, then that's how we have to move forward. And that being said, I'm also restating that there hasn't been anything squim specific where it was like a make it or break it vote. So my hope is that there's nothing like squim focused, where losing out on a vote would make or break something for squim. That's a hope, though, not guaranteed.
Does this meeting occur in Port Angeles?
I attend virtually. So yes, it's in Port Angeles, but I attend virtually.
I think, I think we should, I think we should revisit this at our next meeting, when all seven O's are in, able to discuss this again. But I leave, that's, I'm just one, one voice in this room. And so I'll see, I look to you all to see what you'd like to do next.
Are you just wondering if Dan's available? Is that what you're just?
I mean, if the alternative is leaving it open, we may as well wait to talk to Dan when he's here. I don't know if we knew last time that we could attend meetings virtually.
We did, but we didn't know that they, I mean, I didn't know that they only last an hour or less.
That's not true. I think she was trying to sell it. Yeah. More often than not, they are closer to two meetings, or sorry, two hours.
I think just, just some background, why I can't do it, is because I have a one and a half year old at home. So he probably wouldn't let me sit on a Teams call for that long. But that being said, as he gets older and is more likely to just sit in front of the TV and watch Cocohellen, that might be an easier thing for me to do. So.
So does council just want to put this over till next week, when our next meeting? And all right, we'll go ahead and do that.
And then I didn't know if Heather was going to bring it up, but at the last one, I had volunteered to go to the EDC meetings because it was in the schedule that it was on Thursdays, but it is not. It is on Wednesdays and I cannot go on that day. So I cannot go to the EDC meetings, but Matt, our city manager can still go and still be on the board. Like they don't have bylaws saying, like, only electeds can be on the board. It's anybody who can, any like leadership, I think, maybe that can represent squim. So, and Matt has already let me know that he doesn't mind doing that again, since he was doing that already in 2024. So he didn't mind moving forward with him being on, being the squim rep for 2025. And I think that was it for me.
Thank you, Rachel.
The city manager for Port Angeles, for Forks, for whatever, they're, they're also on the board. So it's not unusual to have me sitting next to them. So I'm happy to do that, should you wish. It's been, it's been fine for the last year.
And what did, I'm sorry, I pushed the button on exit, excuse me. What was the, what day in time is that meeting again? You said it was a Wednesday?
The EDC meetings. Hold on, sorry. Let me get my, I might have deleted it already. Um, I want to say it's the third, oh gosh, third Wednesday? I want to say that's right.
I believe that's right. I'll look it up as well. And it's one, it goes from about one to three.
Is that what it was? Okay.
Yeah. And, and it is a hybrid meeting. So I tried to go in person. They like it in person. It, it helps with their quorum or whatever. But, but yes, it's a two hour meeting once a month.
Thank you for representing squim in those, in that capacity, Matt.
All right. And the last item, just to recap, is city manager Huish reached out to Pete Tumsland to see if he would be interested in the opportunity from board. He is, he submitted all his application paperwork and we're just waiting on the commissioners. So that's an update for that.
Do you, do you need a formal motion to bring it back at the next meeting?
No, I wrote a note, put it on the agenda for next, next meeting.
Okay. So if one of us is not here at the next meeting, can I hear a verbal that you cannot do the, the Clallam Transit position?
Are you planning on being here?
Oh, gosh, no. I don't think anybody could pay me to not be here.
Anything for open discussion? I was going to say, looks like all staff is gone other than Emily. Emily, if you were, and Mike, yeah, if you were, and Christina, I don't know, whoever was working the Sunshine Festival, I'd compliment you again for a job well done for six years in a row. So.
Yeah, there was a lot of staff there, a lot of staff putting in time that whole week before the Sunshine Festival. A lot of volunteer hours went into it. There were some certs there, I think I was speeding the schedule, I want to say from eight in the morning till nine at night. So thank you to our amazing certs that put in the time and effort to do that. Yeah, I saw staff throughout the day working on different, what would I call them, stations, working on different stations. I think most of the parks and maintenance crew were there, just kind of floating around in case anything popped up, because you know something will at any event. And, but yeah, it was a great time. I was going to bring it up for open council discussion too. So since we're on it, I'm just going to little segue. Just, it was such a fabulous day. And I think that we're going to get a lot of feedback when we, when we, when the events team puts out the survey and, or, you know, gets feedback from volunteers and the vendors that were there. The market was fabulous. Squim Arts Commission had a whole project for, like art that they can use for next year. So I think that is such a great idea to already prepare for next year's Sunshine Festival. I got to run around in a sunshine costume. So that was probably my favorite part of the day.
Did you get that costume?
Um, I got it from Hannah. So she said she had three of them and I got to wear two of them. And it was just so much fun dancing around with kids. It was really funny being in the sun costume. And it was kind of like half and half where kids would be super stoked and come give me a high five. And then half of them were like, what in the world am I looking at? And we're a little bit scared. So it was kind of half and half, but it was just, it was lots of fun. And then the after dark, super nostalgic, oh my gosh, I rocked out so hard. I am still recovering. So it was just so much fun.
And I think the Friday night setup was a lot better than previous. Kudos to whoever set that up.
Agreed, agreed. There were so many more activities this year. I think the food trucks were a hit, the partnership. I mean, every year we have the partnership with the tribe, but the social dance was just like cherry on top, just amazing community partnership. So awesome.
Anything else?
Thank you. It was an incredible, incredible day. I was so grateful for the sunshine, actually, real sunshine this time. And there's, there's been sunshine at the Sunshine Festival in the past, but had a blast with the Sun Fun color run. And this time coming across the end, we didn't get hailed on with snow. So, you know, silver linings, I just, yeah, it was a totally delightful day. Incredible music, incredible, incredible music. So huge shout out to the Parks and Events team. Please keep bringing all of that epicness. I would say that the music was incredible. I would say that it was a little bit loud, just a little bit. And I know I wasn't alone. Several people found me. I was there most of the day. I had to disappear for a little bit, but then came back to check out Super Nostalgic. And it was very loud. So I don't know if that's something that could be remedied. But yeah, every time they'd go for the cymbals, I'd just be like, so I don't know. Otherwise, it was a totally magical day. Everything inside, everything outside, the day before. it was a totally magical day. Everything inside, everything outside, the day before. Yeah, let's go Sunshine Festival.
And thank you Harmony for singing the Star Spangled Banner at the beginning of the color run. Come on, that was beautiful.
Thank you, Matt. As I arrived, the gentleman who was emceeing the color run asked, hey, is there, are there any singers out there? We need someone to sing the National Anthem. And I was like, oh man, there's no one doing it yet. So I was like, hey, I could do that. Thank you. Singing is one of my gifts and I, and I am honored to share. And I appreciate the, the compliment. Thank you, Matt.
Do you want to sing that song at the next council meeting?
I move that. I'm just kidding.
Anything else? All right, anybody want 10, March 18th, agenda planning, 2 o'clock? All right. Well, if you can message Heather to see how we make sure you don't get four of you. Otherwise, next meeting will be on the 24th at 6:00 PM. And other than moving the student liaisons away from the city attorney, because they are saying for purposes of the record.
No, they're being trained really thoroughly, very well, I think.
No, if there's a motion, because it is that time of the hour.
I move to adjourn. I will second that.
Everybody have a good night.
Drive safe.